Good evening. Welcome to Monday, September the fourteenth, Committee of the Whole Meeting, to be held in our wonderful concert hall in Victoria Hall. I'd also like to remind everyone that the meeting is being livestreamed and audio/video recorded, and shall form part of the record which will be retained according to the Town of Coburg retention bylaw. For further information about the collection, please contact Mr. Larmer, our municipal clerk's office. With that, Deputy Mayor, over to you for agenda additions.
Thank you, Your Worship.
You've got to put your mic on.
Thank you, Your Worship. There are no agenda additions this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any disclosure of pecuniary interest to members of council? Seeing none, we'd like to proceed. Mr. Larmer?
Next, Your Worship, we have General Government Services, and we have Chair Deputy Mayor Suzanne Sagan.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Your Worship. The first item is a memo from the Municipal Clerk Manager of Legislative Services regarding diversity, inclusion, and equity within the Town of Coburg. The action recommended: the council receive the memo from the Municipal Clerk Manager of Legislative Services for information purposes; and further, that municipal council on June 29th, 2020, provide its staff with a direction to draft and present a diversity, equity, and inclusion policy for the Town of Coburg that will encourage, promote, and insist upon awareness, equality, and acceptance by all residents and municipal staff in the corporation of the Town of Coburg. And further, that staff recommend that the municipal council not only provide direction for diversity, equity, and inclusion policy, but that council engage and establish a leadership approach in responding to a call for more municipal action on supporting diversity, inclusion, and equity across the jurisdiction on the Town of Coburg community. And further, that council direct staff to create supporting governance structures with internal and external stakeholders from the Black, Indigenous, and people of color, women, people with disabilities, newcomers to Canada, the lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, queer, two-spirit, intersex, and asexual peoples, as well as those who identify as pansexual, questioning, non-binary, and other gender and sexual minorities, 2SLGB, TQ1AP+ community, and other visible minorities, in order to identify and develop priorities, strategies, and initiatives to support the equity, diversity, and inclusion effort in the Town of Coburg. And further, that council direct staff to engage Coburg's diverse community to help create potential draft terms of reference to advise council and make recommendations to provide a monitoring and measuring role to help ensure that the Town applies a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens to its policies, services, and programs. And further, that council direct staff to make an application to join the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, CIM, as a commitment to investing time and resources toward creating a more welcoming and inclusive community in which the CIM network brings together municipalities that want to improve their policies against racism, discrimination, exclusion, and intolerance. And together, the municipalities undertake initiatives to eliminate all forms of discrimination with a view to building open and inclusive societies. And further, that council direct staff to bring forward a report to a December council meeting or an earlier meeting presenting a status update on the recommendations approved and outlined within the staff report.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Larmer, would you like to make a summary, or would you like to call our staff member to the... No, at this point, you're fine. Thank you. Are there any further questions, clarification at this point, from members of council? Counselor Chorley?
First of all, I'd like to thank our clerk, Mr. Larmer, for the initiative taken on this report. I certainly agree that the Town of Coburg has the opportunity to play a leadership role in terms of ensuring diversity, equity, and inclusion, more engagement with some of these communities here within our own community. My question to Mr. Larmer is, can you just explain in more detail some of the engagement methods that you're envisioning regarding these different groups and communities?
Mr. Larmer?
Through you, Your Worship, to Member Council and council members. In regards to this report, I think, and you'll read through the analysis, I think one of the important steps in this process is to engage the community. It's going to be one of the larger pieces in regards to this. I myself, as reference to the report, do not have the direct experiences in regarding equity, inclusion, and diversity, other than what I can read and understand and listen. And I think that last word is the key, and listening is something that has to be brought to the forefront, not just listening internally, sorry, externally, but also internally as well, as well across different organizations within the community as well. So, an ad hoc committee of council is something that we can and work to, to create a terms of reference. But for me and staff to develop a terms of reference on our own, I don't think it does the justice that it needs in order to really understand of what this committee wants to see in a lens that have learned and actually lived experiences in order to develop a concept and education and communication with the public. One of the things that is a big communication piece would be our social media. Bang the table is one. Surveys are another strategies that we can work with our communications department to try to get an understanding of what direction the community would like to go to, and try to find those discussions currently that we're maybe not hearing in the community within the Town of Coburg, and bring those to the forefront to make sure that we're including a lot of those experiences, understanding, and innovative, and a way forward. One of the things I also mention in the report is that some of these diverse minorities and groups that would be, someone that would need to, you know, want to be part of this program, might not feel comfortable coming to a meeting or being recognized themselves, which is something that we still want to hear and engage from those individuals. So, we need to create some kind of shared experience or an area where we can listen without making somebody uncomfortable and still being able to come forward and provide their experiences. Some programs and other local municipalities that are part of the CIM group have what's called a door program, which they have across the town. They have these doors that are set up around town, and they allow people to write on them on both sides of them, which their experiences, you know, related to any discrimination, racism, anything along the lines that would be included in a program or plan or strategy going forward. And it gives them an ability to have their voice heard without coming forward if they're not ready yet, which the door represents that opening for them to be able to pass that line and be comfortable with sharing their experiences and providing that individual learning experience to the town so we can move forward within the town itself. And that goes as well with our own organization, too, to make sure that we are, you know, considering everyone, all those experiences as well, and going to the forefront to get that listening. So, that's a key part of this. Obviously, I'm not an expert in it. We'd have to engage our communications department, as well as we'd have to engage that local group in the... going forward and try to learn from them as well.
Counselor Chorley, does that suffice at this point? Thank you. Mr. Larmer, I know that you've introduced our new member to council. Would you or Mr. Davy like to, at least for camera, to introduce our newest member to the team, for those at home?
Yes, so I can quickly introduce the Town of Coburg as part of the previous budget awarded a contract for an accessibility coordinator, which is Jamie Kramer. We have a unique opportunity here because Jamie Kramer left her previous position at the Canadian for Diversity and Inclusion, the center, I think that's right, Jamie, I have to get that right, sorry, the Center for Canadian Diversity and Inclusion, as well as she came from municipality city of Windsor prior to that, which was the accessibility coordinator, as well as created the inclusiveness plan, diversity for that municipality as well. So, before council passed that resolution, we interviewed Jamie, and she's successful for the position of accessibility, which she believes is also part of this solely, as well as that accessibility component for this. So, we know that we have a fair bit of work to do with our accessibility program in the Town, with our multi-accessibility plan. So, we really think that this can incorporate nicely into that position, and this position actually, and this policy going forward as part of this report, definitely we have a very knowledgeable, experienced person now on Coburg staff that would be able to help develop this and utilize this program. Part of the Center for Diversity and Inclusion is working with municipalities to create similar programs like this. Jamie, if I'm misstepping, you can remind me, but also working with large companies, too, to make sure that there are meetings and the references related to this as well. So, that's Jamie Kramer, and that is a contract right now. And going forward, we'll have to see if, depending on what the direction is, because if this moves forward, there is a little work on council's end and staff's end to get this program going. And I think it's important, and the recommendation is a bit long, but it's basically in sick parts. And then the last part is to bring a report back to council. So, this program, we'd have to, depending on what council's direction is, we would definitely bring back a report in December, too, just to give the council some timelines and understanding of what the next steps are.
And if I can add to the members in council and the public, for the first time in many years, we have new microphones. We are all adjusting. We're realizing now we don't have to be onto the mic to speak. Actually, the further back we are, actually, the clearer it is. So, please bear with us as we adjust to the new microphones, and we hope that you like the new sound going forward, and it's something that council put in the previous budget. With that being said, are there any other questions, comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Against, carried. Mr. Larmer?
Next, Your Worship, we have Planning and Development Services, and we have Chair Counselor Nicole Beatty.
Thank you. Hello? Great. Thanks. Just a quick question through you, Your Worship, to the clerk. I noticed that we have a few presentations that I believe from some of the applicants, as well as the Director of Planning. Just for a point of order, do I call the presenter up prior to reading the motion, or do I read the motion for that to be on the floor and then welcome the presenter?
Yes, so you would definitely just read the motion, put it on the floor, and then open for discussion, and then pass it to the director, and then we can go from there, if that's a comfortable...
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Item number one is a memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding an application for site plan approval for the Canadian Coast Guard Search and Rescue Station, the redevelopment of the Watson McEwen Terramura Architects on behalf of the Canadian Department of Fisheries and Oceans for 114 Division Street in Coburg. And the action recommended is that council receive the memo from the Director of Planning and Development for information purposes. And further, that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to authorize the mayor and the municipal clerk to execute a development agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Canada, represented by the Minister of Fisheries and Oceans, for the proposed redevelopment of the Canadian Coast Guard Search and Rescue Station at 114 Division Street in Coburg, subject to the finalization of details by municipal staff and partner review agencies. And further, that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to remove the holding H symbol from the subject development lands. Are there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, over to Director McLashan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, you see my report on the agenda regarding the application for site plan control for the Coast Guard's Search and Rescue Station redevelopment. I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation for the benefit of council, just to go over some of the key points of the proposal. Mr. Alden Jansen, an engineer from Department of Fisheries and Oceans, or DFO, wasn't able to be here this evening. He's actually based out of Winnipeg and has travel restrictions currently. However, Lisa Young is here from DFO, southwestern Ontario, I believe, a little closer, so she was able to make this evening's meeting of council. So, as you may be aware, the existing Coast Guard Search and Rescue Station is aging. It's been around for a number of decades at its current location, and in fact, is not meeting their needs in terms of operations, and as well, part of the complex is uninhabitable due to some health and safety issues with the structure. Oh, there we go. It's going. All right. So, locationally, as you're aware, the Coast Guard is located on the north end of the east pier, within the lawn area. And there are actually two parcels involved in this site. The concrete T pier to the west of the main pier, and the Coast Guard Station is where the boats are housed, and as well, a 1,573-square-meter area on the east side of the pier, which is essentially the lawn area between the concrete, or sorry, the asphalt laneway and the beach. This asphalt laneway is, in fact, splits the two parcels that are leased by the federal government. So, on to the lease. Of course, the federal government used to own the pier and the harbor until they divested it to the municipality a number of years ago. There is a lease with the federal government pertaining to the Coast Guard. It is a perpetual lease, which provides the federal government free and exclusive use of access, occupation of the lands, buildings, and structures that are located on those two parcels of land that I mentioned. The less E, or the federal government, shall still abide by all of the rules and regulations of the municipality, and shall not construct any buildings on the property without council's approval, and that's being the less O, we are the less O of the lands. And the approval of this, of new buildings and structures and such shall not be unreasonably withheld. And finally, the federal government is responsible for the maintenance, responsibility of ownership, and all liabilities associated with the use, operation, and function of the Coast Guard Search and Rescue Station. In terms of the application, it was just over a year ago that the Coast Guard submitted the site plan application. It was received by council, this council, on August the 12th, 2019. Since then, it's been undergoing extensive technical review through the development review team, and the final drawings have just fairly recently been signed off by this team. Current policy context is that the lands are designated in a dual designation, both environmental constraint area, as well as the public open space east pier area in the harbor area secondary plan. Zoning is very similar, environmental constraint zone, which of course recognizes the Lake Ontario shoreline and wave uprush hazard, and as well, open space exception two holding, exception one zone, fairly detailed zone that covers all of the east pier from essentially the municipal parking lot down to the lighthouse. So, currently, the site is occupied by one-story Search and Rescue Station and Workshop for the Canadian Coast Guard. I mentioned earlier, the buildings are deemed unsuitable and, in fact, unsafe for occupation and use for long term. So, the Coast Guard is proposing to demolish and remove the existing buildings on the site, including that detached dwelling, portable office, the detached garage, and any accessory buildings. In their place will be a new 486-square-meter Coast Guard Station containing a two-story residential module and a one-story garage and workshop to the north. These two modules are actually linked by a center, a single-story breezeway that accommodates office and ancillary functions. The landscape scheme for the site was intended to respect the environmental sensitivity of the area, given it is next to an evolving beach area, as well as an active, working recreational harbor. Their plan was to try to preserve and enhance existing natural heritage resources that are on the site, and four of those large mature birch trees, a mature willow tree, and three smaller birch trees along the east side of the lawn area are proposed to be retained and protected. They will also help provide shade through the summer months as well, and screening from the public realm. In addition, just on the west side or the laneway side of the buildings, there will be softscape, ground-oriented landscaping to, in terms of, in the form of gardens and As indicated, with respect to the building, they're conceived as two modules, being the two different functions, one being the Coast Guard Residential Module to the south, as well as the single-story garage workshop to the north. The single-story breezeway, as I indicated, is in the center, and the building is not a public facility in terms of the general public or residents. It is an active, working station, and no interaction with the public occurs. In terms of building and sustainable and landscape design, because it is a federal government project, they're required to meet the National Building Code, which supersedes the Ontario Building Code. I've included a number of renderings that the Coast Guard provided of different viewplanes for the building, both from the harbor and the north, as well as the beach views. So, the building design specifically is intended to address the federal government's initiatives that all new buildings shall be net-zero, carbon-neutral ready. Accordingly, the building design is following a passive house, a passive house, high-performance design approach to new buildings for the residential wing and the connecting breezeway. The passive house design is a design that consumes 80% less energy than a conventional building, and will also rely on sun shading, exterior roller blinds, and high insulation levels to remain cool throughout the summer months. Because the garage itself is more of an open workshop, it will remain more or less open to kind of the elements for extended periods of time, and therefore, more conventional building approaches are proposed for this module. As you can see with this rendering, viewplane from, looking from the beach westward. So, the design rationale, the architect's design statement for the rescue station was for it to become a focal point for the waterfront, and enhancing the appeal of the area, and as I say, respecting the environmentally, environmental sensitivity of the area. They also wanted to ensure that it still respects the professional image of the Coast Guard and their functions. This being a very highly visible location and prominent in the community, the building is intended to offer, you know, high-quality, signature design, and harmonize with the character of a recreational waterfront and beach area. As you can see by the designs, the roofline and the architectural elements are quite unique. The architectural design statement specified that the roofline is treated as a sculptural form or element, with triangular forms to resemble abstracted sails, being a nautical theme. It will be easily identifiable, and certainly from a distance. Will act as a marker for boaters and a visual boundary between the recreational harbor area and the beach, Victoria Beach. Cladding of the materials and all of, all the modules will be light-colored cement board, shiplap panels, they are installed as a vented rain screen, sloped metal roofs, overhangs, drainage system will be provided throughout, and robust structural steel armature for the rain gutters to provide low-maintenance durable solutions. As indicated, the south, or sorry, the north garage workshop building will be more of a conventional design. Will have steel frame construction. There will be translucent and clear glazing above the, above the first story, I guess you could say, or the mezzanine, to provide some light and glow into the, into the structure. The garage door itself will be translucent, will be upward folding, pre-manufactured hanger door to provide flexibility and storage for some of their equipment, including their Zodiac boats and other, and other boats that they may require. As part of the review of the application, it went through a comprehensive process through the development review team and external agencies, and a number of background detailed reports were submitted as part of the application, and those are noted in the report of Madam Chair. In terms of the east pier and connectivity, from day one, and in fact, even in preconsultations with the DFO, there was a lot of communication back and forth with respect to the future east pier reconstruction and design project, and the Coast Guard, in discussions with Director Huswick, were very cognizant of the municipality's need and wants, and wanted to ensure that they could accommodate or facilitate the Town's need for a pedestrian connection from the pier to the beach promenade, while also respecting the fact that they are an active functioning search and rescue station that does require a certain area and functioning for their, for their actual site. In addition, there are some mature trees, as I indicated, along the east side of the property, so there's somewhat limited area that could be actually utilized for any particular pedestrian link along there. So, what DFO has proposed is to remove and replace the existing chain link and wood rail fencing along the east side and south side of the, of the property, which is abutting the beach wall, and replace it with a black decorative metal fence to secure the perimeter of the Coast Guard, while also providing a setback of approximately three meters between the beach wall and this new fence to allow for pedestrian connectivity, should council wish to implement that in the shorter... wish to implement that in the shorter to mid to long term. And there certainly would not preclude any future larger pedestrian connections or design options for the south and east of the Coast Guard station. So they certainly wanted to be respectful of that wish of the municipality, and the actual implementation of the fencing and the pathway is something that Mr. Huswick and our Parks staff will work with the DFO staff in the field when that time comes in next, next year. As far as public notification engagement, as you recall, back in August, a planning staff report was brought to council to receive the site plan application, and the application particulars were posted on the municipal planning applications webpage. And DFO in February, just prior to the COVID shutdown in March, they convened their own public open house regarding the search and rescue station on February 13th of 2020. Approximately 20 persons were in attendance and asked a number of questions of the consulting team and architects, I believe the mayor was president, was present, and the manager of planning was also available. Some of the questions generally included, you know, queries regarding the shape, the design, and the appearance of the building. The response was that it was intended to be a more nautical-themed building to respect the context of the waterfront and the harbor, take the appearance of a graceful bird and a visual marker for the harbor. Some questions related to whether it was heritage enough or met the criteria for a heritage harbor. I guess the first response in that respect is that it is not a designated structure under provincial legislation or property. However, under Parks Canada guidelines, it's very clear that new construction shall be distinguished from historic or older construction and not try to create fake heritage. So, you know, if many of you have seen the ROM Royal Ontario Museum, you'll see the older section of the museum, and you'll see a very modern front section on blur, which is intended to be distinguished from the old and historic, historic. I should also note with respect to design, the initial design for the DFO search and rescue station prior to their submission was one of their more stock examples from an industrial harbor in southwestern Ontario, which was essentially a two-story gray box. So we certainly wanted to work with the Coast Guard and the DFO to present something that is really quite unique, was very cutting-edge in terms of sustainability and as well a very visible marker for the harbor and for the town. So that, that was the design philosophy that the architect, the architectural team brought to the table on this, which will be a one-of-a-kind search and rescue station for the Canadian Coast Guard. And Madam Chair, as you have read out on the action recommended, I'm certainly here to answer any questions, and as well, Lisa Young from DFO may also be on hand to answer any maybe more specific technical questions.
Thank you, Director McGlashan. As always, it adds a great additional insight to the application. Before returning back to the motion on the floor, are there any follow-up questions or points or clarification from members of council? Your worship?
Through you, Madam Chair, the only question I have, and it's been asked by a number of citizens, they were curious, is there a target date for demolition? They realize the structure needs to be demolished, they're just curious as to, was the timeline yet defined? So that's what I mostly received from the citizens at this point.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to the mayor, and possibly Lisa can elaborate a little bit on, on the answer to this, but the information I received last week from DFO is that they have about two more months of tender and process for awarding of the tender before construction begins. So, you know, assume possibly November, territory, December, and following which there would be about six months construction period. So my understanding is that they wish to proceed over the winter and try to get the majority of the operation functional by next boating season or seasonal of 2021. Of course, winter construction can be unpredictable, depending on the harshness and severity of a winter that we may have. That could delay the project by a couple of months longer than that. So optimistically, it could be April, May, possibly into early summer before it finishes, but if, if, Lisa, if I've said anything incorrect, please let me know. Is that generally? Okay, thank you.
Thank you to your both. Your worship, does that satisfy your question?
Thank you.
Counselor Charlie?
Thank you, Director McGlashan, for that summary. Just following on from the mayor's question regarding the timeline for demolition and construction, could you just briefly explain how the construction of the new Coast Guard building will intersect with the development of the east pier? And also, I noticed on the landscape design, there is a temporary operations trailer. I'm just interested in what the final location of that trailer might be.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Charlie. Yes, the timing of the search and rescue station should be, again, dependent on the weather, much be completed probably in advance of the town starting the construction on the east pier design. I may just ask Mr. Huswick to clarify and elaborate on some of those aspects because he is a little more in tune with that timeline. But with respect to the location of the temporary operations trailer, you are correct, and unfortunately, I don't have a laser, but on the left side of that slide, you can see a rectangular box, which is a long box there on the left. The intended location for the operations trailer would be along the west side of the pier access laneway, close to the wall of the pier, directly west of the existing search and rescue station. And Mr. Huswick had a number of discussions with DFO regarding that location based on the shore plan draft report results for the engineering technical, excuse, assessment, thank you, Dean, the assessment on the harbor wall and the pier. And perhaps maybe I'll just ask Mr. Huswick to respond, it's kind of a little outside of my area.
Madam Chair, just in terms of the timeline, then, the east pier design, final design and costing is expected by February of next year. Following that would be the preparation of tender documents. Following that would be the actual tender process, and that's assuming that council approves the capital expenditures for a construction phase within the 2021 capital budget. So if that is incorporated, then of course, we would proceed then based on the parameters that council stipulates in the budget, we would proceed to procurement, and I would expect that construction probably wouldn't be able to begin until late summer next year. And then we would have to, through work with the engineers, look at the structuring of the construction process. So it's quite possible, and depending on what council approves in the capital budget. So there's two components, there's the infrastructure repairs to the east pier, and then there are all of the enhancements. So it's quite possible that part of the construction project would be done in the fall of '21, and then the remainder could potentially be pushed into 2022 based on weather considerations, but those are all the details that are yet to be determined. So assuming everything goes well with this project, as the director mentioned, they expect and hope to have it completed by the spring of next year, which will be long before we're likely to get close to any type of construction.
Thank you to both directors. Counselor Charlie, any follow-up?
Thank you. I do have one quick follow-up question, just a minor point. I think I heard this question at the open house that was in February. I didn't see in the renderings any signage or a Canadian flag. I'm just wondering if that will be included with the new building.
Through you, Madam Chair, great question, Counselor Charlie. Maybe I'll ask Lisa to respond to that. I understand that most federal government buildings do have Canadian flags, and they likely will have signage, but maybe she can elaborate. Thank you.
Yes, I can confirm that as a federal workplace, it will have both a Canadian flag and our standard signage. Thank you.
Thank you to both. Any further questions? Counselor Darling?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just in the notes here, it says, this question may go to the interim CAO, it says that they will look after all liabilities associated with the property. I'm just curious, are one of those liabilities paying taxes, or do they pay a stipend, or does federal government get use of that land for free?
Yes, through you, Chair, to the counselor, no, there's no compensation for the use of that, that was part of the divested chair agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other further questions? Deputy Mayor?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. McGlashan, or I just, I'm kind of interested in the sustainability aspects of the building. It's a very unique style, and what kind of passive heating, what kind of, is there solar, is there thermal energy? What kind of sustainability aspects are there to this building? It's fairly small, but it certainly has a southern exposure, so you could elaborate on that? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Deputy Mayor. Yes, so the passive house philosophy is one of the most, the highest performance building standard that you can really achieve, and particularly in residential, but they are being applied to non-residential applications as well. It is a voluntary standard that exceeds the, all building codes throughout, throughout Canada, at least in other jurisdictions. So in terms of the actual design or structure, I may ask, Lisa, I'm not sure if you know a little bit more of the ins and outs, but passive house is certainly a very high-recognized design philosophy and utilizes only 20% of the energy normal conventional homes and buildings would, potentially, maybe Lisa can answer that question a little better, Madam Chair?
Thank you. So I can elaborate, the passive house system is a method of design that uses extreme insulation values to limit the amount of energy that's used, and then it uses a combination of passive solar to gain thermal heat, and then also full air exchange. So it's combining a few different systems in order to drastically reduce the amount of energy that's required to run the station.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may just elaborate, I had the benefit, pleasure of taking a tour of a passive house design in Ottawa through one of the FCM conferences a couple of years ago, and I can attest to the fact that the insulation levels are extremely large. In fact, most of the windows in a passive house design are recessed because the walls are actually quite thick and full of insulation, and that they are so efficient that they actually have to have appropriate air vent ventilation and circulation systems to be able to move the air around because it is actually so efficient, it's almost airtight in that sense. But they are the highest standard of building construction in terms of sustainability, really you can find in, at least in Canada and in Europe.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Your worship?
Again, I, this time, don't have a question, but I would very much like to thank Minister, all the efforts from the Canadian Coast Guard's search and rescue station and all the members. The reason I say that, because you've had a very proud tradition in the town of Coburg. It would be so easy for you to often relocate to another location, and I'm very delighted that you've been creative and innovative to bring this to stay within the town of Coburg. And more importantly, the part I want to emphasize is that you are an active station. And I know there are times, unfortunately, we've had a call on your service for different types of rescue, both within Coburg Port Hope and along the shore of, and I should say, the waterways of Lake Ontario. So I'm extremely proud that you're going to be here, I hope, for another 100-plus years. So thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you, everyone, and it's certainly our privilege to serve this community, and we look forward to continuing the relationship for many years into the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and as coordinator of planning, I would just like to echo his worship's comments on not only being an active tenant and community partner in the town of Coburg, but most definitely, I think this passive house and an architectural design not is only going to modernize, but while maintaining the heritage character of our, of our pier, but will be most complimentary to the future revitalization of the east pier. So thank you to all involved in the presentations and additional information this evening. I think we've had a good discussion and answered some detailed questions, so just final call for any follow-up comments. Seeing none unless members of council would like me to reread the motion as printed on the agenda or shown on the agenda, the motion on the floor. So I will call a vote, all those in favor, seeing none, or opposed, seeing none, it's carried, thank you. Moving along to item number two is a memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding an application site plan approval for the Golden Plow, my apologies, Golden Plow Lodge at 555 Courthouse Road and 983 Burnham Street, Coburg. The action recommended is that council receive the memo from the Director of Planning and Development for information purposes, and further that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to authorize the mayor and the municipal clerk to execute a development agreement with the Corporation of the County of Northumberland and Lakefront Utilities Services, Inc., for the proposed redevelopment of the Golden Plow Lodge at 555 Courthouse Road and 983 Burnham Street, Coburg, subject to the finalization of details by municipal staff and partner review agencies. And further that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to remove the holding age symbol from the subject development lands. Before I turn it over to the presentation, are there any preliminary questions from members of council? Seeing none, over to the Director of Planning for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And attached to your agenda is my staff report regarding the Golden Plow Lodge redevelopment project. And as has been the case over the course of this project, the county has provided this council with updates of the project as it has progressed, and tonight is no different. They wish to provide you with a, an overview summary presentation of the results of the technical review and leading up to the construction of the new Golden Plow Lodge. So this evening, we have a number of people from the county, actually, I'll introduce some of them to you, Jerry Pilon and Ryan Stitt from Salter Pilon Architecture will be making the presentation, Jennifer Moore, the Chief Administrative Officer for the county, as well as Mo Panu, the Director of Transportation Waste Management, and Mark McIntosh, who is also the project construction manager as well from the county, are here this evening to answer any technical detailed questions about the project. So maybe I will ask Mr. Pilon if he would like to come up to the dais and make his presentation.
Thank you, and welcome to council chambers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Director McGlashan, and the rest of members of council. We're thrilled to be here tonight to give you an update as to where we are and our status with the project development, and present to you the update for Golden Plow Lodge and the Northumberland and County Archives and Museum project. As has been said, that we've attempted to try and give updates regularly as the project has progressed, so we'll try and give you a high-level briefing as to what we have done and where we're at today and what we're looking for going forward. So our outline basically will be to give you a bit of a project background, we'll go through the project location and site plan. I know most of you are familiar with the project, but we'll keep it at a high level. We have a few renderings that we want to show you, just as the project has progressed. We'll give you an update on our project cost estimate and schedule, a status update on our consultation. We'll give you an update on our project cost estimate and schedule, a status update on our consultations with our neighbors and Courthouse Road. And then we'll talk about approvals and next steps and then, you know, share with you contact information should there be any questions going forward beyond that. By way of project background, the existing facility is 151 beds, approximately 100,000 square feet. As you all know, their, the existing facility is somewhat aged and has a number of different additions and various parts to it. The new facility that's envisioned is one that's 180 new beds, so representing an increase in the number of beds to serve the county. And it'll be just over 200,000 square feet. The facility also includes the development of the Northumberland County Archives and Museum project, which is about 6,000 square feet. This project will be pursuing lead silver. And before we get asked the question on passive house, the, there isn't a long-term care passive house project in Canada. And passive house, while it has requirements of energy efficiencies through thermal density and wall systems and other things, those things also limit the number, amount of glazing you can have in a wall. And long-term care facilities, by virtue of the guidelines we build through the province, dictate that the residents like to have lots of natural light and large windows. Those two contradict each other and our priority goal is to comply with the Ministry of Long-Term Care and meet their requirements. So Ryan will speak briefly about our sustainability objectives and how we're achieving them within that project, but I thought I'd save that question. The project was initiated in 2016 with a pre-design and conceptual project endorsed by the county council in 2017. Our firm was engaged in April of 2018 and we've developed with the county a three-phase approach to the project. Phase one will be the construction of the new GPL and the Archives and Museum project. Once the project is constructed, the residents in the existing Golden Plow Lodge will be decanted and moved into the new facility, which will allow us to move to phase two, which is the demolition of the existing GPL. Once the demolition is completed, phase three will be the site remediation and the finalization of all the campus site works and turning the rest of the site itself into a larger campus for the county. In terms of approvals and next steps, the approvals process we have to go through involves a number of different bodies that need to endorse the project going forward. Primarily, the Ministry of Long-Term Care is one. We're happy to report that approvals have been obtained from the technical group and the minister to move forward with construction. And it was a happy day on August 19th, a while ago, just under a month ago, where that approval was granted. So the project has been tendered for construction and it was tendered on September 2nd to a pre-qualified group of general contractors and pre-qualified subs. Obviously, we are working and have been working with the town of Coburg through the site plan approval process as well as the building permit process and a foundation permit. And we're, I would say virtually through that process with a couple minor comments outstanding that we feel are something that is easily dealt with in short order here, hopefully. So our next steps will be to complete the tendering process. And right now, we're in the middle of a four-week planned tender period. Construction is set to begin this fall and we will continue to work with the neighbors and have development support agreements signed by them. And we'll continue to communicate with the public via a project website that the county has established and will be operational for the duration of the project. And then obviously be available as a consulting team and with the county to address any concerns that arise during construction, should any actually arise. In terms of the site plan process, just to give you a high-level view of where we're at, it's been a thorough and rigorous, rigorous process. Our initial site plan submission was August 13th of 2019. We made a resubmission on November 13th of that year after preliminary consultation and comments were received back from the Technical Review Committee. We made submission two on March 13th of 2020. We made an update once again on June 5th and then our last resubmission was on July 23rd of this year. We received our final comments on August 13th and all comments related to the construction of the new build have been addressed. There's some minor comments related to Courthouse Road and easements, which will be addressed upon the upload of Courthouse Road by the county, which is hopefully anticipated to be September, October, county council. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to my associate, Ryan Stitt, who will walk you through a bit of an overview on the, on the project location itself, our site plan as it's been developed, and walk you through a few of the renderings and some of the sustainability issues and approaches that we've been taking.
Thank you, Jerry. Good evening, council, Madam Chair and Director McGlashan. So just to take a look at the, the site as it is right now, I did bring a pointer just to help here, so excuse me if I turn my back for a second. So looking at the, the property itself, we can see the existing Golden Plow. Directly below the existing Golden Plow is the recently constructed county headquarters at 555 Courthouse Road. And the new Golden Plow will be constructed in the greenfield to the west of both of those properties. And in the middle of the site is the existing Halcyon Place, which stays as is during construction. So on this slide, we also see in blue the existing outline of Courthouse Road as it is today. So for the new site plan that's being proposed, in that greenfield site on the west side of the property, we are showing our, our three-story Golden Plow Lodge redevelopment. As mentioned, Halcyon Place still centered in the middle of the property there. The 555 Courthouse Road, county headquarters, being in the southeast corner of the property and with the demolition of the existing Golden Plow, leaving a greenfield site on the east side of the property there. In this development, there's also a realignment of Courthouse Road that brings from the existing entrance off of Elgin Street through the center of the site, giving access to 55, or sorry, maintaining access to 555 and also providing a new entry point into Halcyon Place and a new entry point into the new Golden Plow. There's a few parking lots located in this vicinity as well for the development, parking lot to the south of the property for visitors and parking lot to the north of the property for, for visitors, or sorry, for staff and facilities at the top side of the, of the site. The realignment also establishes a turning circle at the top for access of vehicles into the north end of the site that would be used for deliveries as well. So it's been a long conversation with the design and sustainability of this project. As Jerry mentioned, we are pursuing a lead silver designation for the project and this is being done through our team with our sustainability consultant as well. So this conversation has gone through all the regular channels with the county and the consultant team to be able to develop the targets that we are looking to initiate within the design of the project itself. So a few notable ones at the bottom of this slide are showing natural light to the resident rooms and common spaces to meet the sustainability efforts, but also to provide the requirements of the Ministry of Health, energy-efficient mechanical systems, LED lighting throughout with occupancy sensors where available. The construction materials with high organic composition, also locally sourced materials as well. Green roofs, both active for the residents and the staff and non-active roofs as well, where it wasn't viable to access them. And access to fresh air into the resident rooms as per ministry guidelines, access to outdoor courtyards and terraces to engage with the environment and also bird-friendly glazing to protect the facility from birds in the area. So a few images of the facility that I believe the town of Coburg is familiar with at this time, but this is a dusk rendering of the front entrance of the Golden Plow Lodge redevelopment proposal. In this development, there's a large wood canopy at the front of the building, a center atrium, that is the glazed piece, to offer a beacon to the front door of the facility. On the left-hand side of this image is the museum and archives component of the project as well. So it is a separate piece of this building, but is integrated into the design, so it does have the ability to flow into the facility as well. Speaking about natural materials, as mentioned, the wood canopy, but also natural stone elements to relate to the existing context of the county as well and also to mimic and respond to some of the architecture of the existing 555 headquarters facility. This image is another angle of that front entrance, looking underneath the canopy and up the east side of the building. As a daytime image, you can see that the, there is a few green spaces located on the east side of the facility along with roof terraces as well that you can see just behind the main stairwell for the facility. And again, bringing that natural element into the interior of the building as well, looking at natural courtyards for the residents to be able to engage in that are included within the design of this facility.
Thanks, Ryan. So what we'd like to do now is just give you a bit of an update as to where we are with the cost estimate and our schedule for the project. The, the graphic you see there is one that we've been tracking from the beginning. Project cost is approximately $80 million, hard construction cost, $100 million with soft costs involved. So it's a very significant project for the county, as you can see. As mentioned, we had ministry approval to go to tender August 19th, a very happy day. So we issued documents for construction on September 2nd to be closed approximately four weeks from that date. So we do anticipate a fall construction start for the project. And as you can see from the graphic, you know, design started early in 2018. We're now in 2020 and tendered. By fall, we will be under construction. And with the different phases that we alluded to previously, we have a target date for resident move-in for the summer of 2022. And that's an important date for us because, you know, the funding from the ministry for the project has to have an occupancy date attached to it. And so the county has been very proactive in trying to move this project forward and get the residents into the new facility as soon as possible and ahead of that schedule. So it's a very exciting time for us to get, be able to get shovels in the ground and get moving on the project. In terms of consultation with our neighbors, communication with the neighbors began really at the pre-design stage. The county undertook that themselves early in 2016 and it's been ongoing through the design process and will remain that way through construction. The primary consultations with the neighbors and the primary neighbors are the Church on the Hill, Halcyon Place, the retail building at 1,000 Elgin Street West and the residents on Elgin Street, 978 Elgin Street West. In, in terms of the consultations, a number of meetings were held with those groups to, to keep them informed and bring them up to date and let them know what we're planning and doing. For the Church on the Hill, the access will be via Courthouse Road, the west leg to Elgin Street as, as was shown on that site plan previously. The county obtained a verbal agreement on a discussion, all discussion items during a meeting that was held on August 19th with the Church on the Hill. And as luck would have it, the church is having their board meeting tonight at the same time where they're going to ratify that agreement that was, was previously made with the county. In terms of Halcyon Place, a number of consultations there. Access will be removed from Courthouse Road, the east leg, but will be part of the internal campus road. And they, we do have signed written consent received from the board for that. And we will, you know, continue to have conversations with them through construction. In terms of the business on Elgin, access will be provided through Courthouse Road, the west leg, with access to Elgin Street and the county is still in communication with that owner. In terms of the residents, the main access is proposed to be from Courthouse Road, once again, the east leg, and the county is still in communication with that owner as well. In terms of consultations with the town of Coburg on Courthouse Road, the county is proceeding with the upload of Courthouse Road as directed by the town of Coburg. And a bylaw will be coming to county council in September, October for the upload of Courthouse Road. And during the construction of the western and eastern legs, will remain open. The east-west leg will be closed during construction early next year. However, as part of it, we have a phasing plan and bus service will remain accessible throughout construction, which was obviously a big requirement for Halcyon Place and other residents and staff that work in the area as well. So that really is our, our kind of quick synopsis of our, what we've, what we've done, where we started and where we're at. In terms of contact information, Mr. Mark McIntosh, who is here tonight, is the project manager and all communications will go through Mark. There's also a general project email that is, that is on the screen and part of the package. And then there's a part, project webpage that will continue to be updated and documented and, and show the progress of the project as we move forward. So, Madam Chair, with that, that's our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that additional detail to a future project that's not only going to enable people to age in place with dignity, but to continue to invest in long-term care of, of Northumberland County residents. So thank you very much for that. Any questions or detailed follow-up from members of council? Counselor Charlie?
Thank you very much for your presentation. My question is about the Ontario government's. They've, they have announced an independent commission to look into long-term care in Ontario. The last I saw was that a report is due from that commission on April 30th next year. I'm just wondering if that report and if that commission were to make recommendations that would pertain to the physical, long-term care environment, would there be time or flexibility in your project to be able to implement those kind of recommendations?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to report that what we've tried to do is be proactive in how we've approached the design of this project. And while we all await what the, what the ministry will come forward with for their guidelines, I can say to you that the, the standard to which this home is being built through the vision and forethought of the county is one that I'm sure will meet and exceed any of those guidelines going forward. The, the design itself has been put forward and even gone to tender with the flexibility to adapt the number of private rooms versus basic rooms on a dime without major reconstruction or major redesign to influence and impact the construction schedule. That was a decision that was made by the committee as we discussed opportunities with the design early on. Beyond that, I think the majority of the, the things that will come from my early discussions and ongoing discussions with folks at the ministry are that the target for a lot of these things is really existing homes that don't meet a high enough standard in terms of what resident needs are through lessons learned through COVID. I can tell you that we have dealt with this through the use of materials and finishes that are, have a high sensitivity to infection prevention and control measures that are very important in those types of environments. We have air handling systems that are superior to any other that we currently have in long-term care facilities in the province or at least meet the highest standard, let's put it that way. And that, you know, I, I do feel confident that the caliber of the facility that we've designed with the guidance of the county is one that will allow us to adapt to whatever comes forward.
Thank you very much. Any other questions to the presenters? Seeing none, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
To the director, I believe we have a secondary presentation? Excellent, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I certainly thank the presenters for providing some good background and details on, on this proposal. My intent is to just run through some of the key highlights from the municipal development team perspective and I'll try not to regurgitate anything that has already been said by the presenters. And I think everyone knows where the site is at this point. I'll skip through this. So yes, the application was formally received by this council on September 9th, 2019, almost one year ago today. The lands are located within a major institutional area in the Coburg West Business Park Secondary Plan of the official plan. And similarly, the site is own institutional holding zone in the zoning bylaw. As a part of the background review, the submission included a number of reports, approximately a dozen detailed reports and plans submitted with the application. These included the normal architectural site plan, site servicing, grading, electrical plans, but also included mechanical vegetation management, landscape plans, tree inventories and such, as well as urban design briefs and topographical and geotechnical information. So there's an awful lot of information that was submitted with the applications and I can certainly attest when, when they are submitted, the number of drawings is tremendous when they come in. So we've been trying to go digital as much as possible. So we've been trying to go digital as much as possible in the last six months with the, with the pandemic, and it seems to have worked to reduce some of the paperwork. So the proposal, as you've seen from the presenters, is a very large redevelopment project for the Golden Plough. I will not go into too much detail as the presenters have provided it. However, one of the key elements of, of the site design is that it is to function as a, as a campus, as a sort of a long-term institutional campus, but not necessarily institutional, I guess that's not the right word, be residential campus in this case, provide dignity for, for persons in, in long-term care. The, the site will be very supportive of active transportation with bicycle lanes throughout the, the major driveways from Elgin Street up through to Strathie Road and to Burnham Street. And that was certainly a major part of our official plan policies and of this design philosophies to ensure safe and active transportation modes for, for all. In addition, throughout the site, there will be dedicated pedestrian pathways and seating areas for residents, visitors alike, to meander through the site, take advantage of various interpretive stops along the way. And in particular, there is an indigenous interpretive area stop. I believe there are some other natural heritage interpretive stops as well throughout this, throughout this site, so that people can educate themselves as well as experience a nice open space area. Within the overall context, I believe the presenters did provide you with some, some background as to where the site is in relation to existing uses. Halcyon Place is kind of the, the center of the overall complex and will remain in situ. All of the development and redevelopment and demolition will actually happen around them, and they will be accommodated through new access points and actually integrated into the campus more so than they really are kind of now just off of the west side of the Golden Plough Lodge. So they will be certainly front and foremost in the, in this design scheme. The proponents did give you a good overview of the consultations with the neighboring property owners, as well as the, the Courthouse Road impending closure. And I think the county mentioned this at the last presentation to council in June, that the closure of the east and north section of Courthouse Road is imperative to the success of the Golden Plough Lodge redevelopment. It's something that the county certainly worked very hard to acquire additional lands at the top end of Courthouse Road and create a very regular usable space for, for the new plough and bring it closer to the south of, of the site. So the, the landscape, site and landscape design was, is very elaborate and generous for this particular property. There's over 200 new trees being provided on-site for, as part of the redevelopment, in addition to protection of existing trees in the vicinity of, of the existing Golden Plough Lodge, once it, once it is demolished. And together with all of the garden areas and seating areas that I mentioned, there's over 2,700 shrubs and plants to be incorporated into the design, which is, is very extensive landscaping. Reference was made to numerous courtyards, both internal to the building, so accessed by the internal, excuse me, staff and, and residents, as well as external courtyards and seating areas throughout the site. And this, excuse me, goes a long way towards their LEED certification, which is very important to point out, that it is distinguished from Passive House, and that Passive House is very much just a building-oriented, sustainable, high-performance design system, whereas LEED is more of a neighborhood or a complex, area-wide sustainability checklist, I guess you could say, which not only looks at the sustainable elements of the building in terms of green roofs and high-efficiency HVAC and all of that, but also looks to active transportation modes, protection of natural and cultural heritage, and other features external to the building, which qualify as checkmarks to the LEED certification. So I know a little bit more maybe about LEED than I did about Passive House in that, in that sense, but I'm certainly not an expert by any means. As mentioned, the parking for the GPL will be split, with the south area being reserved for visitors, and the north area for staff and service and loading areas for the, for the facility. Overall, there will be parking for 203 vehicles, including six barrier-free spaces. Talking sustainability, there will be five electric vehicle parking spaces and charging centers, 11 green vehicle parking spaces, four visitor bicycle spaces, as well as covered bike shelter for employees. The presenting team did provide you with a, an overview of the building elevation, so I'll just kind of breeze through those. Here's an example of one of those exterior secure courtyards where residents will be able to access and be secure from the outside, whereas many of the other garden areas are open and, and free to, to, to general visitor population throughout the site. So these are going to be safe, secure areas for residents. The composition of the building, as indicated, will be a combination of architectural block, brick veneer, as well as some wood feel or wood-shaped aluminum cladding. Curtain window wall blocks, as mentioned, to provide ample light and, and passive solar benefit and gain to the, to the buildings. And also a number of natural earth elements, such as natural wood timber. If you've ever been into the Northumberland County headquarters, they use a lot of natural wood timber within that building, and it too is a LEED-certified building as well. In terms of accessible design, the complex and surrounding lands were reviewed with a, with an accessibility lens. Enhanced accessibility measures will be incorporated, including fully barrier-free curbing, access pathways, seating areas, doorways, entryways into the facility, and particularly to meet the provincial requirements for long-term care homes, of course, but also government buildings are required to be very free and accessible. The architect did, in fact, meet personally with the Accessibility Advisory Committee back in the fall, approximately a year ago, to go over the, the design plans, and the questions of the committee were answered and addressed at that time. Just a review of public notification engagement. Last September, the notice of application and information memo was brought to council in open session. The information was also posted on the municipal planning applications website, and two site plan application notice signs were posted on the property, one abutting the Elgin Street frontage and the other abutting the Burnham Street frontage. I mentioned that the county chief administrative officer has provided council with some updates along the way, the last meeting being on June the 1st of 2020. And of course, all site plan applications are dealt with in open public session. From a financial consideration perspective, the application fee alone in deposits were $5,500. This is a $100 million facility, is certainly one of the largest development projects Coburg has ever had, and will result in over $320,000 in building permit fees. With respect to the building, sorry, the tree levy, over $5,100 will be accounted for as part of the municipal tree levy. Those funds go into the tree reserve that the arborist uses to plant new trees along municipal boulevards, particularly budding the subject properties. And as a government body, the county is exempt from municipal development charges. And finally, Madam Chair, the recommendation, as you have noted and read out, for council is there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions or refer any to the presenting team.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin, for that summary and thorough walkthrough. Any questions for members of council to the director? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor as read and as presented on the agenda. I will call for a vote. All of those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you very much. The final item, and item number three, is a memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding the clearance of conditions for the draft plan of subdivision preservicing and subdivision agreement for Kingswood 425 and 425A, King Street West, Coburg, Mason Homes Limited. The action recommended is that council receive the memo from the Director of Planning and Development for information purposes, and further, that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting, to authorize the mayor and the municipal clerk to execute a preservicing agreement and a subdivision agreement with Mason Homes Limited for the 27-unit residential subdivision development located at 425 and 425A, King Street East, subject to the finalization of details by municipal staff and partner review agencies. Any preliminary questions before the director proceeds with the presentation? Seeing none, over to you, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And attached to your agenda, you will find my staff report, providing a summary of many of the key elements of this proposal, that has been before council in a variety of forms, including draft plan of subdivision approval with conditions. And currently, we are dealing with the clearance of draft plan conditions for final approval of the Mason Homes subdivision, known as Kingswood subdivision. So this evening, we have some presenters who wish to provide council with a formal summary presentation, followed by myself with a similar summary presentation as well. So we have, from Mason Homes, we have Karen Liu, project developer, development coordinator, I believe, as well as Mr. Gordon Mason from Mason Homes.
Mr. Chairman, members of staff, members of council, what am I saying? That's what happens to you when you get as old and forgetful as me, guys. Anyway, I hope you don't mind that my assistant here, Karen Liu, has come up, because I have a hearing disability, and we, I have not been involved in negotiations with the staff here. Am I talking too loud?
No.
That's a problem when you don't hear well. You don't know your elevation or your volume of your voice. Anyways, you're going to just have to put up with me for a couple of minutes, and then I'm out of here. I understand, the, as we have it today in the report, we agree with all of it except one item. And it's not a very contentious issue, but it has come to my attention, and I just wanted to bring my experience here and my recommendation to, to the council. And it's the fencing on the west side of the property, and it goes from the south end of the car lot down to the south end of the site, and there's a heavy vegetation along that property line. And we have found that a chain-link fence with vegetation in front of it and around it is a softer eyesight than looking at a wood fence. And also, it's a better fence, it lasts longer, and in my experience, which is a couple of years, the wood fences, they get destroyed pretty quickly, and we prefer not to put them in and construct them. And our recommendation is, and I understood it was in the recommendations originally from staff, that the fencing could be chain-link, and my recommendation is that we change that part of the agreement to say that it's chain-link fencing, and I think it would just be a better job. It will be greener, less invasive than a wood fence, and it will last longer. And beyond that, I guess I'd like to thank staff, thank the staff and yourselves for us being here tonight, and we hope we can go forward with the development, and we hope to be in before council quickly, and we would service this, we'll take the vegetation out, we'll service it this winter, and be building houses there next spring if we can have it serviced in time and all the approvals in place. Thank you, gentlemen and ma'am. Any ques, any questions you'd like to ask me?
Myself, quite possibly, just perhaps before we proceed into the application, and then I recognize Counselor Charlie, you had your hand up. To your request around the chain-link versus a wood fence, Director McLaughlin, would you like to speak to that right now in the context of your staff report, or wait till after the presentation's received?
It's at council's wish. If you wish to wait through, for the presentations first, it might be the best way to handle it, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. If Counselor Charlie, if you're okay, I'll just pause and take questions at the end of the presentation. Mr. Mason, are you going to stick around for the end of the presentation, to the end of the presentation?
Yes, we'll be here.
Okay, thank you. Are you okay, Counselor Charlie, waiting till the end? Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. You, you have in your packages the paper copies of the Mason Homes presentation. They wanted to just skip right to the nitty-gritty, and we'll go to my presentation overview of the application. So the, the area of land, as you may know, is approximately 1.6 hectares of land on King Street East, just east of Brook Road South on the south side. The lands have been vacant for many years, but were formerly occupied by an old motel that was demolished a number of years ago. So this is a picture of the draft plan, it's a fairly technical document, but it illustrates that there are 27 freehold townhouse lots on five blocks of land accessed by a municipal road extension, being Orchard Avenue, which will connect with King Street East. There is also, as you can see, along the south limit of the property, included as part of the road allowance, is an extra-wide buffer, which will accommodate landscaping and tree protection along the north side of Molly Baker Lane, which runs fully east-west across the site, the south limit of the site from Orchard Avenue to Brook Road South. So originally, the application for draft plan approval with conditions was granted by council in October of 2019. I've indicated in my report, and certainly has a very detailed background and analysis of this application, is my September 16th, 2019, planning report to council does provide a lot of, a lot more detailed background information, and should be read in conjunction with my, my staff report. So similar to the other applications, part of the background review by our development team involved an extensive amount of study. In fact, this one, in particular, involved over 15 different studies, reports and drawings, including detailed engineering, stormwater management, but also extensive tree protection preservation, butternut assessments, landscape design, architectural design and such, as well as heritage impact assessment and assessments, and traffic impact briefs, very important aspects of, of this review. From a policy and regulatory perspective, the lands are designated as mixed-use area in the Town of Coburg official plan. The zoning is multiple residential exception for holding zone in the current zoning bylaw, and that zoning has been in effect for probably 25, 30 years, since previous landowner had, had applied to rezone the property for townhouses many years ago. So the subdivision design, as I indicated, is an extension of Orchard Avenue up to King Street East. The new Orchard Avenue extension will be constructed to full urban municipal standards, which will include concrete curbs, gutter, municipal concrete sidewalk, underground utilities, and a connection, pedestrian connection to Molly Baker Lane with a crosswalk. There is also a five-meter-wide street allowance dedication along King Street East for future boulevard and utilities expansion into those areas. You can't, you can see a little bit, the outline of the proposed townhouses on this site layout drawing, but Mason Homes has applied for a minor variance, which will be heard by the committee of adjustment regarding some relief in variances to setbacks related to the front and exterior side yards. And what Mason Homes have done with their architectural designs is include an arts-and-craft style design with front porches and columns, and the intent is to bring those buildings closer to the street and the porches, while maintaining enough room for off-street parking. And accordingly, the bylaw doesn't recognize setbacks that And accordingly, the bylaw doesn't recognize setbacks that are below six meters for fronts of dwellings and exterior side yards. So therefore, they've asked for some variances or relief to allow for the buildings to be moved closer to Orchard Avenue. And this not only satisfies our urban design objectives to bring buildings closer to the street, provide a sense of enclosure to the road, define the street edge, but it also helps provide eyes on the street. You would have eyes closer to the street, safety for pedestrians, particularly in the evening hours. Also, the result of moving the buildings forward maximizes the rear yard space of these townhouses to provide extra spatial separation between the rear of these townhouses and the abutting residential units. And in fact, the setback for rear yards is double what the minimum standard is in normal So in terms of landscape design, this was certainly a major element of the review from day one when the application was submitted. So there are a large number of perimeter trees throughout the site that are being protected. In particular, 20 trees located within the natural protection or vegetative buffer along the south limits of the subdivision on the north side of Molly Baker Lane. You can see with the red circle there. And some of the trees on the site have been assessed by the arborists as being in poor health. Some are ash trees, which are either dying or dead and have to be removed. Or there are other compartments with younger successional-type trees, smaller caliper, and would be removed, and others that are impacted by grading, servicing, or development encroachments of some kind and are needing to be removed. So the landscape and tree compensation plan identifies the replanting of 100 trees on the property, primarily around the perimeter and within the municipal boulevards, as you can see on this landscape plan. There are some larger trees on the southeast limit of the site closer to Orchard Avenue in this location, where inevitably some of the trees are going to have to be removed, and some of them are fairly large, one or two of which are in poor condition. The proponents plan to replant five 100-millimeter caliper red oaks as compensation for those removals in the Molly Baker Lane Trail area, and as well, plant four additional 50 to 70-millimeter red oaks along the south limit of the new road allowance. So there is going to be a compensation element to this area of removals. And as Mr. Mason did indicate, much of the site will be, much of the perimeter of the site will be fenced with board fencing. There was some back and forth and discussion, as Mr. Mason has indicated, with respect to whether it should be chain link fence or whether it should be wood fence. And the town arborists and our development team struggled with the idea of what's better, you know, trying to retain the vegetation and bushes and shrubs that exist along that side, and allowing for chain link, or providing the actual physical privacy buffer that a solid wood fence would achieve, but you may run the risk of losing some of that vegetation. So it was kind of, it was a very difficult saw-off. The end result was, the latest review in August was from our arborist, said there really shouldn't be that much difference in impact to the trees for a chain link fence versus a wood fence. But both options, you need to drill holes, you need to put concrete in the ground and poles and such. So the actual logistics of putting a wood fence versus a chain link fence are not that much different, according to the arborist, but it's just the impact potentially on some of the vegetation trampling removals to get in there to do the work. So that was, I will agree, a very contentious, yet not as significant in terms of the overall development scope of things was, and we certainly appreciate Mr. Mason's commentary to that So the fence in question is identified on the left side of that screen in hatched lineage. There would be a wood fence separating the commercial car lot from the residential, and that is a natural between two dissimilar land uses. However, townhouses and singles don't typically utilize wood in terms of privacy. They're fairly similar in terms of building type and design. Additional fencing would be located along the east side of the property, abutting the old Tangmere Estates Historic Residence, and also along the east section of, southeast section, abutting existing residential on Orchard Avenue. Along the north section of the site, there will be enhanced trees and shrubbery and plantings along King Street East to provide extra appeal and buffering along that road In addition to the replanting of trees on the site, the proponents will be providing the town with a tree compensation payment based on a calculation algorithm produced by the municipal arborist, to the tune of approximately $15,000, again, to be placed in a tree reserve for future tree planting in the municipality. In terms of architectural design, I mentioned that the Kingswood subdivision and Mason Homes are proposing to develop an arts-and-craft style of architectural design in keeping with the scale and massing of the surrounding neighborhood, one- and two-story building typology. The intent is to create a very intimate streetscape in appearance and feel, and harmonize with the existing neighborhood, while also reflecting an increased density that is usually warranted in abutting major arterial roads and mixed-use kind of nodes. So three distinct unit types break up the facade of the building. As you can see by these diagrams, there are combinations of brick masonry, wood shingle facing, different roof lines and treatments and gables and hips and such, part of the roof units, two physically kind of distinguished parts of the townhouses in that they don't look sort of monotonous. Also, as indicated, ample front windows would be incorporated into the design to help with that eyes-on-the-street mentality and keep the public realm safe. Skip along here into engineering design, and one of the larger technical engineering components of this site was stormwater management and drainage. Currently, as proposed, the subdivision utilizes a combination of conventional piped infrastructure as well as green, low-impact infrastructure for stormwater management purposes, the one being underground stormwater management chambers within the road allowance, shown here in the red arrows, as well as rear infiltration galleries to the back of the western townhouse units. And this is to accommodate flows from the rear of these townhouse blocks and infiltrate into the ground for smaller rain events, up to 25-millimeter rain events. Larger rain events over 25 millimeters would be captured through the intercepting swale and would run south and southwesterly towards Brook Road South. The current drainage scheme of the site is naturally, it runs to the, from King Street to the southwest towards Brook Road South. At this present time, the drainage is impeded by a blocked drainage situation via Molly Baker Lane, and a lot of vegetation and growth that has accumulated over decades of natural succession. So there is an actual drainage issue currently associated with the site. So with the engineering design, as you can see by this diagram, about 90, 80% to 90% of the site is actually going to be captured via the internal stormwater, underground stormwater system, and drained eastward through underground pipes and the stormwater chambers to the Coverdale trunk storm sewer main. And as you can see, the arrows depict where that drainage is to go. A very small component, about 10%, 15% of the site, which is the rear of the townhouse units, would flow to the west, but this will be accommodated through the infiltration gallery for smaller rain events, 25 millimeters or less, and be captured by the intercepting swale towards the southwest for larger rain events. So the location of that swale is going to be improved by Mason Homes as part of this servicing of this development. So towards Molly Baker Lane in the southwest corner of the site, just to the sort of east and south of 38 Brook Road South, north of Molly Baker Lane, there will be a culvert placed underneath the existing lane, and a swale will be hand-dug with supervision of consulting engineers and the arborists to ensure that the swale meanders through that wooded area without negatively impacting existing trees and vegetation, and provide an outlet to Brook Road South, as you can see by those smaller red arrows on that plan. In summary, the development will actually reduce the amount of flow that will be running towards Brook Road South. In terms of sustainable design, the proponents have identified they're a certified Energy Star, certified builder since 2005, which exceeds Ontario Building Code standards. Excuse me, they are placing a high emphasis on high-quality building materials, compact built form, resource preservation in terms of cultural and natural heritage resource conservation and stewardship. They're also using green infrastructure techniques wherever possible with the underground infiltration storage chambers, as well as the infiltration galleries to the rear of some of the units. From an accessible and visible design perspective, the public realm infrastructure will be fully accessible, including the municipal concrete sidewalk system with tactile plates, as well as a pedestrian crosswalk will be installed at the east end of the development, abutting the existing Orchard Avenue, to connect with Molly Baker Lane, and there would be a dedicated crosswalk and crossing into the laneway. In addition, Mason Homes strives to ensure that the entries and opening elevations of their buildings are as close to grade and as street level as possible, and this is to minimize the number of steps and make it more accessible and visitable to residents and visitors alike, and to those with disabilities. In terms of public notification engagement, the initial application was received by council earlier this year, just before the pandemic began. Applicant voluntarily convened a public information meeting, and, sorry, this is in 2019, publicly, a public information meeting, Victoria Hall, in April of 2019, and the public meeting of council was held in the fall of 2019. Council granted the approval of the draft plan with conditions subsequently in October. So in January of this year, Mason Homes submitted their application to clear conditions. Staff information report and notice went to council on February 18, and persons on record were provided with notification of the application and where to provide, or where to obtain information on the website of these, of this application. Financial considerations include the $7,850 subdivision clearance fee and deposit. In terms of development charges, based on the 2020 rates, the development of 27 townhouses of this size would generate approximately $360,000 in development charges for the municipality. There is a cash in lieu of parkland payment of approximately $50,000 for the town's parks reserve account, and in addition, as mentioned previously, the tree compensation levy of just over $15,000 to go towards the tree reserve. And in terms of building permit fees for the units, it'd be approximately $55,000 to $60,000 in building permit revenues. And Madam Chair, that concludes my summary presentation, and you've already read out the recommendation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Any questions for members of councils, starting with Councilor Chorley, I believe, had a question for Mr. Mason, followed by Councilor Darling.
Thank you. My question regarding the fencing, I just wanted to know if there was a significant difference between the cost of a chain link fence and a wooden fence.
Sorry, do you mind repeating that for Gord?
Sure. My question was, is there a significant difference in cost between the chain link fence and the wooden fence that you've suggested?
Significant. I don't think it is. It's a bit. It's, I don't know, it's about 30% more for the wood. The lumber's gone up, maybe it'd be 40, I don't know. But it's not going to make or break the project, I can assure you that. I brought it to your attention because I think the chain link is better. That's the only reason.
And through you, Madam Chair, in terms of costs, unfortunately, I don't have a differentiation of the cost, but Mr. Mason certainly would. But yeah, as I indicated earlier, that the fencing issue was one of those difficult ones, actually, as part of this review. The others seemed to be very technically sound and methodical and completed through the process quite well. The only issue is that a number of residents on Brook Road South did reach out to the planning department, which back onto those townhouses, and did prefer to see a wood fence along that back area. Not all of them, we only received a couple of inquiries from the public. So it's one of those issues that, you know, council and staff alike are struggling with for this particular development, and I'm not sure of the resolution, to be frank.
And to the Director, would you be looking for a resolution from council, or do you think that that's something that you could satisfy through the finalization of details by municipal staff and partner review agencies?
And that's a very good question, Madam Chair. Excuse me, and as part of that, we may work with Mason Homes to see if we can consult with those individual neighbors a little bit closely and see what, you know, maybe even some field investigations and review such individual backyards to... I think it's something that we potentially could come to a resolution as part of details of staff, but failing which, we may have to come back to council to, for that, to adjudicate that, I guess, that issue.
Thank you, and I have to apologize to Councilor Darling. I inserted a question before going to you, and then I see that the mayor has his hand up.
Mr. McLaughlin, I have some concerns as a coordinator of Public Works. I see in the engineering design here the infiltration gallery. Notice there's a couple inspection ports on the plans. Will there be a pretreatment device of any sort to collect sediment before the water goes into the infiltration gallery, or do the catch basins go directly in?
Through you, Madam Chair, are you looking at the infiltration galleries or the underground storage stormwater chambers?
Yeah, in the stormwater chambers.
In the chambers, okay, because the infiltration gallery shouldn't have any ports to them. But maybe I'll direct that question to Director Wills, as she certainly has more expertise in answering that for Councilor Darling.
Thank you.
Hi there, through the chair. So I would have to take a more detailed look at the plans, but as far as underground storage goes, there's typically an oil grit separator before, for all the inlet water that comes into an underground storage unit before it's allowed to infiltrate into the ground. So if there was drainage coming directly from the road from a catch basin, then they would go to an oil grit separator first before going into the underground storage.
Follow-up. Now, the existing Orchard Avenue block going over to Coverdale does not have storm sewer. I take there's going to be a pipe dug up and go into, along Orchard Avenue, the existing block over to Coverdale. At that time, will Coverdale, pardon me, will the existing block of Orchard Avenue be brought up to urban municipal standards, or will it just be the storm sewer outlet pipe that'll go over to Coverdale?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councilor Darling, my understanding is that the obligation of Mason Homes is to construct the underground stormwater pipe. Any further urbanization of Orchard Avenue from the existing termination over to Coverdale would be the responsibility of the municipality to... would be the responsibility of the municipality to, to accommodate over and above what Mason Homes would be doing.
Thank you very much.
Your worship?
Thank you. I don't have a question this time, but I had a very similar situation. I have a 300-foot backyard, and I was trying to determine, do I put in a wood fence or a chain fence? And because the length of the property, I cover five homes on a particular street. In this case, I can see you cover six. And when I priced it out, I can tell you, I was four times the cost of a chain link fence. But personally, I don't like chain link, so I came to a compromise. And what I did, I hired someone who did strip fencing for me in a grid pattern, and accomplished two things. It gave me the look of a chain link fence where vegetation could go through and around, and yet I had the luxury of wood at half the cost. So if you'd ever like to see it, I'm happy to give you my address. I get many compliments on the fence because it's so unique and different, and it satisfied... I went down my neighbors, because I have neighbors, I want to make them happy, and all of them were delighted because they could see through. And for a few of my neighbors, they have small dogs, and they like the fact they can go through the holes in the fence to visit my dog, go figure. But it might be a possible solution because it's a compromise between the two, and it saved me personally a lot of money. So I just thought I'd share that with you.
Certainly, Madam Chair, we can look at the, the options with Mr. Mason and possibly take the mayor up on his offer to have a look at his, his fencing, to see what that's like.
Thank you. Any other questions? Your worship?
Yes, I have more of a technical question for either one of you. I know to all those living in this community, Molly Baker Lane is very important for so many reasons, it's been part of our culture for a number of years. I know we are losing trees for different reasons. I, I guess, Mr. McGlashan, I know we're compensating for trees and the money and the trees and the red oaks, and that's fantastic, but when it comes to the actual lane itself, my understanding, the lane maintenance belongs to the town of Coburg. So my question is, would this be the appropriate time, if we can, to use some of that $15,000 towards improving the actual lane? Because it's been some time since it's had some degree of maintenance. So I guess my question would be more for you, or maybe Director Huswick, or Public Works?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the, to the mayor. Interesting question in terms of the use of the, the tree, the tree levy. It may be something more that the cash in lieu of parkland provisions would be more suited to, since the cash in lieu of parkland is dedicated to a parks reserve account for improvements to park spaces and trails and such throughout the municipality. The tree compensation levy is actually specifically geared to the, the tree planting reserve account. So that's, the compensation is so that the town would replant trees elsewhere in the municipality to achieve the canopy, the, that the urban forestry master plan envisioned. So, but I, I think as part of the development's cash in lieu of parkland payment, so that certainly could, assuming Mr. Huswick and Parks are able to do that, that would be certainly something that could be looked at.
Wonderful, thank you. Any other questions for members of council? Counselor Charlie?
Just following on from Mayor Henderson's question, I did hear from members of the public when this subdivision was first proposed, and there were, there were many concerns about how the construction would impact the tree roots of those magnificent trees along Molly Baker Lane. Could you just briefly explain how this design will address those concerns?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Charlie, that's an excellent question, and it was a major part of the initial review, both by the municipality and adjacent residents. And as part of the initial draft plan approval, the, the area to the south of the site abutting Molly Baker Lane was actually redesigned such that, excuse me, the underground storage, stormwater storage chambers were moved away from the Molly Baker Lane area in that southern tier, I guess, of the site, and in fact incorporated underneath the road allowance, which presented some technical challenges unto itself, because you've got other services like sanitary sewers and water and other things within the boulevards to, to deal with. But that's what storm, underground stormwater chambers are, are designed to do, is to deal with stormwater in tight spaces. And in this particular case, there are two underground storage chambers, one in the north-south arm of the Orchard Avenue extension, and one in the east-west arm. So it's a train of underground storage chambers to actually help the, create the buffer from Molly Baker Lane, which was in the neighborhood of six to eight meters, variable, along the south side of the site, in order to protect about 20 trees that are either on Molly Baker Lane north property limit or just north of Molly Baker Lane into the Mason Homes site, which will eventually be the town's expanded Molly Baker Lane public land. So definitely, as part of the, the review process, it was, it was deemed to be a critical element of, of the program, and it resulted in some changes in the engineering design to, to help facilitate the minimization of disturbance of root zones along Molly Baker Lane, minimize anything south of that road allowance. It'll actually, you'll see the south side of the new Orchard Avenue basically drop off and the buffer area protected and allowed to regenerate and, and continue on in its, in its current state. So definitely, I, I would say that was, was key. As part of construction, in terms of implementation, the municipal arborist generally requires that all tree protection zones be installed with fencing in advance of disturbance of the site and grading, such that the area along the south by Molly Baker Lane would be fully hoarded and protected to do that, protect the roots and the, and the trees, and along other areas where trees are being protected. So that's typically how the implementation works. The arborist needs to sign off that it's been installed correctly, and then the work can occur on clearing the site and grading areas outside of those tree protection zones. So does that help answer your question, Counselor Charlie?
It does, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you to both. Any final questions or comments before going back to the motion on the floor? Does any member of council want to direct the concerns or preferences around the fences, or leave that up to staff with their final review? Going back to the motion then, as read and presented on the agenda, calling a vote for those in favor of the motion. Any opposed? Seeing none, carried. Thank you very much to Mr. Mason for being here.
Next, Your Worship, we have Public Works Services, and we have Chair Counselor Brian
Thank you, Mr. Larmour. At this time, I have a memo from the Director of Public Works regarding a process for implementing poppies on street name blades in the town of Coburg. I'm going to change the action a little bit. The action recommended that council receive the report from the Director of Public Works for information purposes, and council requests staff to proceed with the process for implementing poppies on the eight full-person street names listed in the staff report. I'll take any questions or comments on this situation. Counselor Charlie?
Thank you, Counselor Darling. I appreciate the amendment. I think it's important that we do move forward with this, because it would be a great enhancement to see those poppies on those commemorative signs. And I want to thank Director Wills for bringing us this information so quickly. I did have one further suggestion, and that was that we also enshrine this into the municipal naming policy as a standard practice. I'm just wondering, perhaps if the clerk, Mr. Larmour, can you just comment on whether that's, is that a possibility, that we could make a simple amendment to that policy as well, to make sure that it's a practice that continues every time we commemorate a veteran?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to members of council, certainly if that's added to the motion as an amendment to that policy, we can add that, that specific policy, and I can bring forward that draft included in the policy at next regular council meeting for you, if that's council's direction.
Thank you, Mr. Larmour. Would you like to make that amendment, Counselor Charlie, to the motion? Action recommended?
Yes, certainly, I can make that amendment. It would be a simple addition, and further that this be added to the town of Coburg's municipal naming policy as standard practice.
Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Chair. Love the amendment. I just, for my own heritage lens, would, would that have to go through the Heritage Advisory Committee at all with respect to, or is that only specific to street namings in heritage zones? Just out of heritage curiosity?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to members of council, and the director can comment further if he needs to, but I don't believe that this would have to go to the Heritage Department. I know that there is municipal naming provisions in heritage districts that's as part of the policy, which would be specific to heritage guidelines, but I would not, I would, I would not say it has to be part of the policy, because the other pieces of policy and standards would come into place if we were crossing to a heritage district.
Thank you, Mr. Larmour. Any further comment? Okay, I'll call the, oh, sorry, Director Wills?
Thank you, if I may. Just wanted to make one quick point about, I'm happy to move forward with the process of having the poppies implemented on our existing street sign, as well as future. I just wanted to point out that we are required to have authenticated background information, and having not been involved in this process before, I'm unsure what the Legion's requirements are as far as authenticated background information. So as long as we have that information, or we have access to that information for all the street signs that we currently have, we'll definitely proceed with that. And as far as moving forward, we need to make sure that we have that, that information in place, because it does have to be approved by the Legion, not just by the municipality. So just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that that's, that process still has to happen, but we will work towards getting that information and figuring out what it is that we need for every single application moving forward.
Thank you for that update, Director Wills. Do we have any further comment? Okay, I'll call the vote on the amendment, all in favor? Opposed, if any? Carried. Okay, does anybody require the full reading, or are we all straightforward? Okay. So the action recommended, where am I here? That council receive the report for, from the Director of Public Works for information purposes, and council requests staff to proceed with the process for implementing poppies on eight full-person street names listed in the staff report. Counselor Charlie, if you will?
And further that this be added to the town of Coburg's municipal naming policy as standard practice.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call the vote, all in favor? Opposed, if any?
Next, Your Worship, we have Arts, Culture and Tourism Services, and we have Chair Counselor Adam Bureau.
I noticed a motion by myself regarding graffiti art installation in the town of Coburg. Action recommended, whereas the town of Coburg has increasingly, has seen a spike in illegal graffiti all over Coburg, on our walls, mailboxes, and numerous other places, and whereas having a place where graffiti artists have a place to express their artwork may curb the high cost of Coburg taxpayers and staff time to have clean and repaint surfaces all over town, and whereas having a graffiti wall installed in the town of Coburg not only will help curb illegal graffiti, but also show how talented these artists are. And now therefore be resolved that council directs staff to bring back to the 2021 budget deliberations a report for costing and possible locations in the town of Coburg. So open up to any discussions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor Bureau. I am, this has just come to us, obviously, tonight, for the first time for discussion, and I have been in conversations with our chief police and our Director of Recreation and Culture. My concern is what we're seeing around town is a far cry from art, and tagging is not art. I've seen some installations in larger cities, although New York City doesn't have one, they have a lot of graffiti, and they have a lot of people trying to eradicate the graffiti. We have been talking about a graffiti policy and bylaw, obviously because of everything on the general government's plate, we haven't come to council with anything, but it primarily would be for the removal of graffiti. I just would like to refer this to the spring, so that we can take a really good look at where we are with the budget and where we are. I, I hesitate to add anything, whether it's, I know you're just asking for a costing, but it sets a trend as to what we want to refer. This, to me, would never be a top priority, because until we see art as opposed to tagging, which recently has been arrested eight counts of, of charges, I see that we probably could, well, my, my motion is to refer until after the budget and after we get the graffiti policy in place, which of course would come to council. So I'm envisioning spring 2021 to bring this back, and I know that probably won't give us money in the budget, but we may find that there's no money in the budget anyway. And even if there were, I think professional artists that live in this town should be included, and we shouldn't really gravitate to graffiti artists, and it may or may not solve the problem.
Thank you for that, and you are correct in, in one ways of, there may not be enough money in this budget for this year's thing, as how COVID hit, and there's a lot of extra costs that we, or a lot of revenue that we have lost. Basically, this motion is just asking for a staff report to find out how much it would cost, if it's possible, in locations, and what staff thinks about it for council. We've been waiting on this graffiti policy ever since before the election. That was, that's, as I recall, in the first year I was Chair of the Downtown Business Improvement Area, the, that was where it was first brought up to my knowledge, I'm sure maybe before that, but still, nothing has been done. This is not, and I want to make myself clear, this is not for illegal graffiti that is happening out there now. This is not for that. This is, a lot of these graffiti artists, there is art. They, they have them, there's streets, murals, everything painted, and to me, this, calling them, yes, the ones that are just going around tagging people, but it is still a form of art. And I've learned that over the past two years, being in my portfolio, arts, culture and tourism. How you express yourself in art, that, that is art. However you do it, whether it's a doodle, or a painting, or a mural, or a sculpture, that is art. And to me, all we're doing, and we may refer this in the budget, or it may be voted down, I don't know, but to me, all we're asking is just for a staff report, and to come back with costing and possible locations for the 2021 budget. That is it. Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Counselor Bureau. I hear what the deputy mayor is saying in the sense of, I just want to make sure, in my following comments, I see there's the issue that we're having with illegal tagging and graffiti in the community, but I believe the spirit of your motion is that of public art in public outdoor spaces, community-based art involving all legal type of art as such a program might be defined. So with that lens, I fully support your intention and principle. I remember when the city of Oshawa was developing its urban park a few years ago, and thought how something like that could be implemented or replicated in our community, for example, around the Coburg State Skate Park as a way to expand upon its utility and incorporate public art into green and recreational spaces such as Donigan Park. So I reached out to Oshawa staff to get an understanding of how they developed their arts park, acknowledging that they had similar concerns around the differentiation of promoting illegal graffiti and promoting accessible public art in public spaces. And what I learned from, in speaking with staff, as part of their feasibility review, it included engaging a group of stakeholders. it included engaging a group of stakeholders, including artists, community-based organizations, social outreach workers, mental health counselors, youth and staff to help with the decision-making and make recommendations to the council of the day. In addition to location, the group examined partnerships, external funding opportunities, and what bylaws would have to be updated, if any. A result of that feasibility, community consultation approval by its Oshawa council, they now have the Donovan Urban Art Park. So in learning that, I have a slight amendment to make, to add some of that level of detail in the report that I believe would be beneficial to assist council in its deliberation come budget time, should that sort of the report land. And my amendment is just an extension of your final paragraph in the, now therefore be resolved that council directs staff to bring back to the 2021 budget deliberation a report for costing and possible locations. So I'd just like to expand on that with an amendment. And that would do, to add, and options for partnership development with arts-based organizations, the availability of any potential grants and arts-based funding that may be available to alleviate any pressure on the town's budget, as well as any bylaw changes that may need to be considered by council. No doubt that the Director would include this in the report should that come forward, but I just thought by adding that level of detail into the report would not only set the expectations of council, define perhaps some of those clarifications or parameters around the intention of such a public art space, but as well as communicate to the community what we would be informing ourselves to have that conversation at budget deliberation.
Thank you, Counselor Beatty. Is anybody else, oh, Counselor Burkett?
Oh. Point of order?
Yeah. Point of order. I have an amendment on the floor, and now we have another amendment on the floor.
Oh, you did make an amendment, my apologies.
I apologize on that. So do we vote, do we discuss her amendment, sorry, Counselor Beatty's amendment?
So through you, Chair, the deputy mayor, if I'm correct, she put a motion to refer on the floor, which would be to stall any conversation on the actual motion.
Right.
And that needs to be voted on prior to moving forward on Counselor Beatty's amendment that she's placed on the floor.
Okay, I will call the vote on the motion to refer. That's.
Can we still discuss this?
No, not until the motion to refer is done. So Counselor Burkett, I thought we can't discuss it if it's a motion to refer is already on the table. The point of order was that there's no, any discussion until we vote on the refer motion. So I'm calling the vote. All in favor to refer this motion to the spring of 2021? Those opposed? So it's denied. Any discussion on Counselor Beatty's amendment? Oh, did you have one, Counselor Burkett first, and then I'll go to Counselor Darling and Shup.
It was actually in regards to, it was through you to the Director possibly, given all the things such as the East Pier and various other things that we're working projects-wise, I was just wondering if they were able, going to be able to bring this back to council in a timely manner, or is this going to push off other projects and give further timelines on other things?
All right. Director Huswick?
If it's councils well for us to bring back a report in a reasonable period of time, we'll make it a priority.
Thank you. Counselor Darling?
Thank you. I had two questions or comments. One was to ask the Director that same question. The second, I am in support of art. When I was with Parks and Recreation as coordinator, we had discussed this. Director Huswick, I discussed this before, it kind of fell through the cracks. So I am in support of all types of art. I do not call tagging and graffiti art. I have, it's a bit difficult in the fact that I feel like we're rewarding bad behavior by giving them a graffiti wall. Like, I don't believe in rewarding bad behavior, but I realize that everybody out there is not bad, that it's just some bad apples spoil it for everybody. So I'm willing to have the Director take a look at this and see, give back a staff report, see about costing, but I would like to ask that we give them substantial time to do that, as there is a lot on the floor. Thank you.
Your worship?
Thank you. I appreciate your action recommended, and I also appreciate Counselor Beatty's amendment. It reminds me very much what this town of Collingwood did. When you put these two pieces together, they have, I consider, one of the best artists' graffiti extension of all art on an annual, regular basis, and it's part of their culture now. I can see perhaps we might get there, but we can't get there without a report. So I will support it on that basis because I need to learn more of the logistics and how this fits in, and I think between both your parts, it fits beautifully. And at the same time, I also support the deputy mayor, because there's no doubt on the other side, perhaps for general government, we need to focus on developing a separate graffiti policy for the town of Coburg, which is critically important as well. So I appreciate the deputy mayor's point on that point as well. So thank you.
Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, I'll take a vote on Counselor Beatty's amendment. All in favor? Those opposed? Carried. Now I will read the motion. The amended motion. All right. Action recommended, whereas the town of Coburg has increasingly have seen a spike in illegal graffiti all over Coburg on our walls, mailboxes, and numerous other places, and whereas having a place where graffiti artists have a place to express their artwork may curb the high cost of Coburg taxpayers and staff time to have clean and repaint services all over town, and whereas having a graffiti wall installed in the town of Coburg not only will help curb illegal graffiti, but will also show how talented these artists are. And now therefore be resolved that council directs staff to bring back to the 2021 budget deliberations a report for costing, possible locations, and options for partnership development with arts-based organizations, the availability of any potential grants, arts-based funding that may alleviate any pressure on the town's budget, as well as any bylaw changes that may need to be considered by council. All in favor? Those opposed? Next, we have correspondence from the Secretary of the Downtown Business Improvement Area Board of Management regarding a recommendation to extend the municipally-approved DBIA area patios currently permitted in the town of Coburg municipal right-of-way. Action recommended that council receive the recommendation from the Coburg Downtown Business Improvement Area Board of Management for information purposes and endorse the recommendation to extend the patio deadline date for removal of patios to November 30th, 2020. I did have another motion written, but I was corrected today. Thank you, Mr. Larmour. That the, I wanted this to happen to all of Coburg, but the only patios that are on municipal, Coburg municipal land is in the downtown. So I did not read that other motion, and I do support this. Is there any discussion on this? Your worship?
I appreciate your comment you just made, but could you clarify, because you indicated you have another motion, so is this motion standing, or are you putting another motion before?
No, this motion is standing. This is, what I've read is standing.
Okay, with the clarification that is per only the municipal. Thank you.
Right. Just in case, because I was confused at that too with the other extensions, but they're all on private property and don't pertain to the municipality. Counselor Chorley?
Just a quick question. Exactly how long is this extension? What would be the normal termination date?
I believe the normal termination date is October 15th. So it's another month, month and 15 days. Your worship?
Through you, Chair, and I've been corrected by Mr. Larmour, but I believe from the provincial side, when it's outside our box, I believe theirs goes to almost January, so this is still short of the provincial extension.
Correct. We don't, Counselor Beatty? No, go ahead.
I just had a question of curiosity, because the DBIA has been so generous in supporting restaurants and cafes with some of the costs with regarding to patio extensions and such. Obviously, the weather will be turning in the couple, next couple of weeks, so I just think as a patron, lighting, heat lamps, some of that seasonal infrastructure, is that something that the DBIA will be able to help resource with costs, or have businesses talked about that? I'm just curious as a patron of downtown eateries.
If you know, a lot of the, there's three restaurants I know downtown that have the heaters already, and that hasn't been brought up to the board, but we could definitely take it back and let them know, for sure. Any other questions? Counselor Darling?
Yes, just having had people discuss the farmer's almanac, we're talking snow earlier. I could have assumed that they will shut down and clean things up if we get into a snow removal issues.
Yes, for sure. Well, the storefronts are required to shovel the sidewalks to each of their stores or restaurants, so they would be, if it was impeding any snow or anything, they would have to clear it, for sure. All right. Seeing no other questions, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Those opposed? Passed.
Mr. Larmour, to unfinished business?
Yes, Your Worship, the unfinished business is listed on the agenda with amendments that were passed at the last regular council meeting, and then we have committee open forum. And if I just check my emails, the deadline was at six, Your Worship, and we received no submissions to committee open forum.
Based on that, before we bring closure to tonight's session, I'd very much, on behalf of Coburg Council, would like to thank legislative services, corporate services, maintenance services. This has been a wonderful transition to move from our original council chambers into our beautiful concert hall. I believe staff worked exceptionally over this past weekend and dedicated efforts to set this room up and to meet all public health regulations. I've heard nothing but compliments from members of council upon entry, and I'd very much like to thank you for making tonight possible. I'd also like to thank council for their willingness to put in budget new microphones. They're making a world of difference, I can hear it myself, and I look forward to more sessions in this regard. And I also like to thank the public for bearing with us in this first night of transition. With that, are there any other comments, questions, from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call for adjournment. Counselor Darling, all in favor? Carried.